Seven.
For the purpose of going over or listening to issues regarding the ordinance for nuisance and noise, and the second one for moorings. Let's hear from the public, since there's two of you. What would you like to talk about?
I'm not here for nuisance and noise.
You have anything, Mark, on nuisance and noise?
I don't know, I'm just here to listen.
Okay. Efta, anything on nuisance and noise? Tom, do you want to give us a little update on where you are with it?
Basically, with these two ordinances, Chairman told me to inform the town manager to come to the committee and identify problems within the ordinances. So I did that, and I sent these questions to legal, just to get some feedback. I have had some people approach me with the possibility of maybe shortening the hours on Sundays, but I think that would have to be put down for a vote at some point. Other than that, pretty much what you see is...
There is one highlighted aspect to the noise ordinance, and I'll just read it to you real quickly. That's been, with the ordinance committee, they added this to it. Any business that holds a valid liquor license issued by the state of Maine and have musical entertainment during, they may have musical entertainment during normal business hours. That's the only thing in there that's changed at this point, correct? You said you had nothing. Make up your mind now. I'm ready, go ahead.
Is there any difference in that number 11 between inside or outside?
I can only read you what's there, Mark. I don't want to make any, you can answer that better than I.
Let me check and see if anyone has that.
This is on page, there is no page number on it, sorry. It's the red highlighted one.
I'm not aware if that takes Tricia, I think.
Go ahead, Tricia.
The reason this was put into place is because the state got rid of the special amusement permitting. Therefore, this kind, the noise nuisance ordinance was conflicting with it, so they put this exemption in for any business that holds a liquor license. Because we don't go through that process anymore. Every May, they used to come in, all the businesses that had a liquor license, we had a public hearing and all that. We don't do that process anymore because the state got rid of that part of it. So this just makes sure it doesn't conflict with the town's noise nuisance ordinance at that point. So they can still do their normal activities of what they've been doing during their normal business hours.
That doesn't address Mark's issue.
Is there some differentiation between inside and outside?
No.
Entertainment?
No.
Okay.
Would you raise that as a concern?
It depends, I think it could be to some folks. I mean, bars are open until 1:00 in the morning. You know, if you have a rock and roll band with amplifiers and all kinds of electrical equipment playing until 1:00 in the morning, and you're working the next day, maybe there's a potential it could interfere with your sleep. But, you know, I don't know if there's been any instances of that or not, so... But the one thing I did find odd about this noise ordinance was that of how subjective it was to the person listening to it, you know, and the person responding to the complaint. You know, I'm familiar with, you know, like crushing in the gravel pit and things like that. They have, you have to have so many decibels, and they have nighttime decibels and daytime decibel level reading. And they're measured at the property line. And, you know, so there isn't anything subjective about that. They come with a noise reader and say, yeah, you're in compliance or you're not in compliance. If you're not in compliance, you need to get in compliance. But, you know, you know, it just seems odd to me that there's no measurable way to determine if, what a nuisance noise level is.
Can I speak to that? Steve?
One second. Go ahead.
When the ordinance was being assembled, part of the impetus behind it was is that the local police department had nothing to work with. And the examples were more, not a rock crushing issue, was more the dog chained up outside all night long while the person goes to work at the mill. There was no way to address that kind of nuisance noise. And it was really about an ordinance trying to be a good neighbor as much as anything. We talked about, back then, we talked about the decibel rating of levels. And we had a number of ordinances in other communities that tried to do that, and it became kind of contentious, numbers came. That was the feedback we got at the time. So it really was developed to help our police department have something to go and talk to someone and say, you know, this is a nuisance, this is why it's a nuisance. We have an ordinance to address it. So that's kind of where it was, as I recall, where it was developed.
Yes, sir.
Was it because of the fireworks, too?
The fireworks was a separate ordinance due to people blowing them off every Friday and Saturday night all across the lake without willy-nilly. You know, so that's why we worked on that ordinance to get it under control to some degree. So people are going to apply for a permit if they want it.
Right.
You know, it's handled reasonably.
John, you in on any of these?
The thing is, when we first kind of put all this together, I mean, we just, we're going to get little things for the cops to go run around and test the noise level, decibel meters. But depending on where you're standing with the meter, you know, you're going to get different levels of noise, I would think, on the decibel meter. Plus, if they're, you know, if they're out doing something besides, you know, noise ordinance, they're not noise stuff, they're not going to stop what they're doing and run into town and, you know, check it with a, you know, a decibel meter. It's kind of an objective thing for the police to figure out, kind of, if this is a really loud, and is it lasting all day kind of thing? Like the dog, or whatever. Or a loud party in your, you know, your neighbor's backyard next to you at, you know, midnight or something like that. There's no, you know, real way to, I mean, there is, we can run around with decibel meters, but who's going to set where the line is drawn on the decibel meter where it's being too loud? This kind of just leaves it to them.
Tricia, do you have anything more to put?
I don't, because these two actually sat on the committee when that was written, so they really know why it was written the way it was.
That's right. I know.
Is it correct, in my assumption, in my recollection, that this line that's in red was added after that?
That has been approved by the Board of Selectmen, that needs to go to town meeting vote.
Right.
That's why it's in red. That is one of the ordinances that is going to be, but there was other stuff that Tom had spoke with, and that's why they're kind of separate. He didn't realize that that was something that is being amended, proposed amendment at town meeting. So, or a special technical.
Well, and also, Tom, we want to, given that, we want to make sure that it's enforceable, and there's not a bunch of junk in here that you don't really need, and you just kind of clean it up.
Yep. Efta?
That was my only concern when we were dealing with this. Have we come across, have we found out how enforceable it is without any means of measuring it? I mean, have we been taken kind of to task for not having any means of measuring the noise level?
I think the idea was to have the, you know, if the police are called, go over there and talk to them, and ask them, you know, please, you know, turn it down. Now, if they called a second time, that's going to cause more of a problem. But I'm assuming most people, if you get, you know, the police show up in your yard and tell you to turn the music down at, you know, midnight or something like that, or just... I think probably most people are going to follow that, but there's no guarantee. I mean, if they have to come back twice, then they're going to, there's going to be a problem. But it's up to the police officer.
Yes, John?
Is that where you put your lawn before 7:00 in the morning?
Yeah.
Where are you, which one?
Oh, I don't know.
And then 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM.
10 to 7, yep.
Second page, number 7.
It's exempt.
Oh, that's...
It says it's exempt.
That's what's in there now, yep? Concerns on that?
No, really. So that means nobody can work in town now until 7:00, is this fastest, basically what it means? No.
This is already passed except the red line.
Right, I thought they did it like a year ago, they did something, yeah.
16.
Yeah.
And that whole list is exemptions, that you can, you're...
Exempt, John. Are you kidding me, your lawn, you can mow your lawn?
I didn't know there was, try and something, no.
That's one of my only complaints during vacation. Is it 5:00 in the morning, I'm just maybe my eyes are rolling open, and then there's a crew of 30 guys next door with leaf blower's lawn mowers and everything else going, like, okay, I'm up, time to go now, you know? I think that's, yeah. And they do, but I, right. Anything else on this?
Yeah, one more thing.
Yes, sir.
This thing about this...
Tell me where you are.
Light trespass on the cover sheet. So, is that, nothing being done with that, is that being expanded?
These, go ahead.
Nothing is being done with that. That, the idea now is to try to create light ordinances, light ordinance. There's, a lot of light stuff is already covered in the side ordinance. But it's just been a matter of preventing somebody from having bright lights shine out of the lake or bright lights shining in the neighbor's windows and, you know, too annoying. Because people, there are some problems, people coming up, buying small camps in clustered areas, preventing bright lights on them, and bright lights on their docks. So basically, we'll probably work on a simple light ordinance without getting crazy with it.
But that's not going to get integrated into the book order?
Yeah, totally different ordinance.
Issue.
Right. And that'll go toward the dark sky nights, that's when the, this is what the comprehensive plan is.
Talk about dark skies, and that's why people come here.
There's a guy in the Highlands that has four floodlights in the front of his camp, and when you're driving up with four, it like, blind you.
Well, that's a hazard.
And it's up on Campbell Fine Trail, so I mean, it's far away, I don't want to break down with the road.
Well, as this thing says, the comprehensive plan calls for a dark light ordinance of some sort, so... Somewhere down the road.
I was just trying to figure out where the best places to, let's say, quickly, but it's pretty best to...
Relative to nuisance and noise, anything else from this well-attended public hearing? Yes, John?
If you notice on the one that came back from our attorney, there's a couple of comments from Tom, mostly the light one, and he just explained that. But also on the end, as far as the penalty's go, Tom pointed out the fee schedule, and then it looks like the attorney crossed those out of the ordinance. Didn't give us any explanation. And so, you didn't cross those out, Tom, in blue?
No, that was from the statutory, Kristen. Part of that is, the ordinance, I think originally stated it'll be in the fee schedule, but really you don't want your violations in the fee schedule, because that's statute stuff. So what she did was she just revised it so that it's a clear cut.
So I'm wondering if we should include that revision that she recommended once we gave you copies of the last meeting on that? And one thing I wanted to point out, I noticed in every one of these, Tom initially sent this to me on April 13th, asking them to, you know, here's some of my findings, can you, you know, make this legal and get it back to us so we can go forward? She didn't do any of that.
Oh.
She made a few comments on everything, it's almost, and then, not only that, but this was April of last, well, last year now. In September, Tricia sent a letter on the marijuana ordinance. Could you possibly get a timeline as to when all the revisions in Chapter 38 will be finalized? The board is attempting to determine when they will start holding public hearings at a special town meeting on this and other ordinances. So she wrote back, I'll be working on the revisions over the next month. I have a tentatively planned on a planning board workshop in the third week of October and public hearings in mid-November. Well, that went, we just got them last week, the last meeting. And when we looked at the records, you know, that's not anything close to what we asked for. We asked for this to be...
Well, there's no recommendations.
Yeah, because we're saying, you're the attorney, finalize this in legal form so we can proceed and go forward and get a vote.
All right, John, bring this up, let's talk about this in the Selectmen's meeting tonight under Tom Manager's report.
Okay, I will.
And then we'll give direction on where to go from there. But relative to the public hearing, it's, anything else from all of you? What we should be inputting or not inputting, or including or not? Did you have something?
I just, is there a reason for the gaps? Like, there's big gaps in between, like, under Article 22.3, and it has general and specific, there's a big gap in between that. And then there's another gap, so that's on page two. And then on page three, there's another gap between number seven, and it's like...
Do you think that there's material missing?
I don't know, I can't, I'm trying to present it.
These were emailed back and forth.
Okay.
So that's, these are...
And base it together?
Just because of the email back and forth. One of them has a different version of Microsoft than the other, so it screws up the formatting.
Oh, okay.
When they go on back and forth via email.
They read, I mean, it's a smooth read, right, too? There's no hurdles.
Yeah, yeah, nothing's missing, it's just a matter of, yeah, formatting when they go back and forth like that. Hence the reason I had to retype the whole marijuana.
Yes, sir.
I was just going to say, I think that revision that Kristen did at the end of the nuisance ordinance is probably good, because it shows the signs, it shows the, with all the kind of garbage that was in there before.
Right, well, let's just make sure that, you know, we carry that through. Yeah. Thank you. Anything else? Moorings. Yes, Rob?
Well, I've read it, and the side notes by Tom are conversations that Tom and I had. And my position is that things are changing in Rangeley a lot. The use of the lake is changing. We're not prepared for what's happening on recreational use of our lakes. I know that the Musluk Makundip Association years back saw things. They took some steps to protect their lake in certain ways. Rangeley has always been behind the afoot with that. There's been no leadership in that regard, there's no lake association to help. The fact is, is that when we did a mooring ordinance, and Donnie can speak to this, because we talked about it, there wasn't intention that you weren't going to take your party boat and pull up in front of my dock from me to you, and drop your anchor and party. That's, that was, that was one of the things that was problematic. Yeah, we have people on the lake that have, you know, million-dollar homes, and we have people on the lake who have a family camp that's been in their family for 100 years, and it's seasonal. And they share it with brothers and sisters who have just moments to go and use it all summer long. And they come here for a reason. They come here because they want to enjoy that experience that they've had. It's going away. People drive faster boats all the time. This, and a correction I'll make in Tom's notes is, I was never presenting a case where you wouldn't fish within 200 feet. Of course you'd fish, because that's what the fish are in June, they're right along the shoreline and right to the lake, you know? But the difference is, is when people come and they drop their anchor, and they're literally 10 feet off your shoreline, and I can tell you why they do it on our end of the lake, is because it's close to go to the bathroom. That's why. They do it all the time. The idea that you can go up to anybody's 200 feet or 100 feet of shorefront right off their dock, and within a very short distance, and just take it over, is really my concern. People pay a lot of money on taxes beyond the lake. There's a lot of theoretical and emotional and history to each and every home and camp that's on the lake. When we put in the mooring ordinance, we talked to the state about the mooring ordinance, because we had the same questions, can we do that, how can we do that? And the state came back and said, really, local authority within 200 feet is an acceptable thing with the state. You're going to go up 500 feet, and you're really, you know, it's really kind of state water. But out 200 feet, you know, close to shore issues, you could come up with an ordinance that, you know, Rob Welsh can't go in front of Dave's place and drop mooring in, in front of his house. They said, that's okay, still state water. The problem is, is that we're going into new territories. We have a houseboat rental on Rangeley Lake, a houseboat. There's no public discharge for a houseboat. So everybody's got a pontoon boat that's going to go, oh, wow, I don't have to buy waterfront property, I don't have, I'll just, I'll just go drop anchor someplace. Live on my pontoon boat. I mean, there's these, a number of these things are building, and no one's prepared for it. A simple way to start is to give people who own property on Rangeley Lake, or in Rangeley, on Musluk for that matter as well, that if you're going to come and drop anchor in front of someone's private property, you ask. You ask, that's all. I mean, that's pretty simple. It's like the nuisance noise ordinance. Reasons that's there is for the barking dog syndrome. People don't do that anymore, they're entitled, everyone's entitled. They, oh, yeah, I can do whatever I want, you know, dah dah dah. We all know that's happening. And we need to have some sort of vision to where we're going to go with all of this stuff. We're producing recreational opportunities like crazy here. But with that, it's going to come the responsibility to protect what we have. And for those that come and make investments in their, in their real estate. I think it's a very selfish, and I think it's a very irresponsible thing to go drop anchor in front of someone's property and hang out. That's what they do, they, 50 feet, they hang out, play their music, which is fine, but 50 feet, in your face. I think it's a pretty simple thing to add to an ordinance that includes dropping anchor.
Because these are two separate issues you're talking about, mooring versus anchorage.
Well, apparently, I'm going, I was always going that anchor is a mooring. It could be, I, I've been corrected, okay? But you're still, you're still holding yourself stable in one place. But it's not permanent. It's not permanent, but if you're drifting along and you're fishing, or you're seeing the shoreline and you're, you know, putting along, and all's good.
No, I'm not, I'm not picking a fight. What I'm saying is we need to define the issues, and then, and then address the issues in the ordinance, so that's, that's all I'm saying.
I agree completely.
Can I ask Tom a question? Does the state have any rule about within how many feet we can control if, and?
Yes, the state talks about a water safety zone, and that's defined in 10 and 12, six and, subsection 13, 00 to 1, and then number 29. And basically, it's just the first 200 feet from a shore, measure from the normal high water line. And so, the municipality's can't control moorings, you know, within that area. And I think the mooring ordinance does that pretty well with, you know, it's designed so the budding landowners don't conflict with each other when they're putting out the moorings and boats. And so, beyond that, the state can pull any other mooring beyond that, unless, of course, it's something that's permitted or something, because they consider it as a possible hazard. It also talks about that within that water safety zone, I can provide you copies of that following the meeting, I can get them to Trish. I found this information today and worked it out, so... So there's also another portion that says, number one, no mooring will be placed so that the object moored thereto extends beyond the water safety zone, or one-third the distance to the opposite shore, whichever is less. So when you have the narrow areas, you shouldn't be going more than one-third of the opposite shore. We should probably talk in the ordinance, some points that were brought up in conversations with people, is difference between commercial, residential, some of the needs there. There's some permitting processes through the state for commercial, have a mooring further out and where that might be located. Also, preventing any moorings going into landing strips for front planes, things like that. So there's certain areas we need to keep clear. And then, of course, choke points, you're naturally narrow ways. I think that one-third distance helps address that. And then, of course, people should be using the proper float, which is a white ball of blue stripe horizontal for the mooring.
But what about what Rob's talking about, somebody in a party boat just throws an anchor off?
Yeah, if you've got a problem with, I talked to the game lords today. The problem they have is from the normal high water line out, that is not the property owner's property, it's state government's. So if there's problems with any kind of harassment, people abusing properties, and I mentioned this to Rob in the past when we talked, you know, about some of these issues, game lords are really the people that need to be called and deal with that. Maybe we need to have some more game lord patrols here throughout the summer to help deal with these issues. I've also recommended game cameras. If those are well-camouflaged place property, then you can get pictures of the gut, specific problem areas, of the boat members, so that the game lords can track those people down. If there's fire, illegal fire use, forest rangers, that type of thing. Because then you're getting into trespass issues. And that really belongs to the state law enforcement that deals with that. Now, you know, some of the, some of the local police enforcement would probably help with some of this as well if you have an abusive property and it's, you know, easy to reach. Maybe it's some of these curdage, or a small piece of property, something like that. But typically, it'd be the game lords that you'd call for the waterway issues. And they'd be more than happy to come out and do patrols and deal with some of these issues. And once word gets out that they do periodic patrols, I think we'll see a lot less of these abuses going on. But I think the key, the key is to bring it to them. We, as a town, we can't force out of that water. That's just, that's, that's an enforceable ordinance. We wouldn't be able to go out and deal with somebody doing something past that normal high water line, unless it's an ordinance, a mooring issue with a neighbor parked in their boat in front of somebody, that kind of thing, without permission, because our ordinance does cover that, so... Because we can regulate placement moorings. So does that pretty much make sense in answering your question, Donnie?
Go ahead, Rob.
So somebody can come and drop, then drop a nice big heavy anchor, and just leave their boat there? Just leave it, it's not a mooring, it's an anchor?
No, can't leave it.
You gotta see, it's more than just somebody causing a problem per se. You know, drinking and crazy and being wild. Everyone gets that part of it, that that's not acceptable. And there's people to call to help you with that. The other side is, is the piece of what people have in front of them on their private property. And how it's intrude upon when people disrespect that, it's, that space. Because they don't care. You know, they just don't care.
Yeah, but what are you going to do about that? I mean, you can't, if they don't care, they don't care.
So, so it's going to come down to, it's going to come down to, I guess, somewhere along the line, the state legislature putting in some sort of different rules and rulemaking. But until then, you know, I can tell you that it's impacting people on the shore. People who pay a lot of taxes. And they don't like it, and people press that boundary all the time. And so one of the only things you can do is really just stick out 15 or 20 moorings in front of your property. Just put a bunch out there, within your 200 feet in your line, just flood it with moorings. Maybe it'll stay away.
Well, by ordinance, you're not allowed that much, but, yeah.
Yeah, but if you put too many moorings out front, the state's going to come and say, now you can't have any mooring at all.
But you know what I'm saying, I mean, it's, it's...
But the problem is not with the mooring ordinance. Your problem is with somebody in their party boat coming up... Your problem is with somebody in their party boat coming up a hundred feet from your dock and just throwing out an anchor and hanging out for the day.
Me to you?
No.
That close. On a regular basis. Because it's convenient.
Hang on, Tom, mark your agenda.
I was just gonna, a mooring is where you leave a boat, you know, when you're not using. And so that's different. If you take, you can use an anchor like a mooring. You know, if you throw out an anchor, you know, and do it. So I think if you leave your boat, you know, for a week, tied to an anchor, that's really a mooring.
Overnight, never mind a week.
Right, well, I'm just trying to, you know, make an example. So, you know, I think there's an unoccupied boat, you know, for an extended period of time, no matter how it's attached, you know, to the lake bottom, you know, is a...
I disagree a little bit. Now, let me clarify why. Having a number of moorings at my establishment, you would need a sizable anchor to safely leave your boat on Musluk-McGunnick Lake on any given day.
Anyway.
That being said, you're at the risk of damaging your boat and other people's property if you don't do it properly. So I think there's a malfeasance there. Because they could end up on your shore, as other things have, from this side way up the lake. So I, I think the distinction needs to be made in the future on the mooring ordinance, differences between anchorage,
Right.
permanent moorings, location of moorings. And also, what moorings consist of? Because it's a sticker shock, and again, I'm getting a little off track here, but it's a sticker shock for those who spend lots of money on their homes. Hundreds of thousands of dollars and millions of dollars and then get a three-thousand-dollar bill for a mooring and they go, "Are you shitting me? Three thousand dollars? Well, you want it to hold because the winds come in through here at forty-five miles an hour frequently." So there's a, so, go ahead, Tom.
I was just gonna say, there is one portion of the mooring ordinance that talks about, it's Article twelve point six, evidence, "A boat or other floating object that is unlawfully moored and violated the chapter shall be privater facie on evidence of unlawful mooring of the boat or floating object." So I would say if somebody, if somebody was to drop anchor like that and leave their boat on a company, yeah, obviously, that's a problem that could be done.
And that's stupid, you know?
Rob brings up a good point there.
So a boat will be gone.
What, these areas tend to also concentrate on areas that have some protection from various wind directions. And those properties are the ones that get most affected by that.
Sure.
Because people pull right in, you know, right in. And I've had people tie up a stern line to the shoreline. And I said, "Get your line..."
Well, they, Rob, I mean, they need the right view.
But you know what I'm saying, they...
I do.
That's another thing. I mean, it's pretty bold.
Yeah. Tom?
That's a whole nother ordinance.
There's, there's one other point I want to bring up. There is a law, and I just want to make this clear to keep anybody out of trouble. And I talked to the game wardens about this. Somebody can drop anchor a foot off the shoreline and fish, or eat their lunch or whatever, then fish. And they're perfectly in their rights to do so. So that's just something to be aware of. And if you, if you, you can be seen as harassing an angler. And there's a law, Title twelve, subsection ten, six, five, four. And I just wanted to point out that it basically reads interference was taken. "A person may not intentionally or knowingly interfere with the lawful hunting, fishing, or trapping of a wild animal, wild bird, or fish. A person who violates this subsection commits a civil violation for which a fine of not less than one-hundred dollars and no more than five-hundred dollars may be adjudged." Now, if that's violated more than three times in the course of a five-year period, then you're looking at a Class E crime. So that's just something to be aware of.
Yeah, but there's no provision in there for the consumption of Budwitz or other like substances, is there?
No.
Okay. I think Rob's point, though, was well-taken, wouldn't you agree that...
I would have said, I just want to make it clear you've got a water product on there. But I believe your best option, and I don't know, Rob, if you've talked to game wardens about this in the past, perhaps you have, but I believe the best option is, you know, get ahold of the game wardens. And I know you've got these continuing problems. And I guarantee you, when they get out and patrol, you know, a couple times a month, three times a month, the word's gonna get around and once people start getting summonses and dealt with for trespass.
And all that. Only if they're fishing?
No, no, I'm talking about abuses of property. Parking in front of somebody's place, using playing, you know, hanging out in front of somebody's property. Yeah, that's not fishing, that's not, so, you know, there could be violations that could be dealt with there, but it's really the place for that would be the game wardens.
Well, but I suppose technically, if they had a fishing rod on board, they'd be, but I mean, that, you know, just pulling up and anchoring and, you know, start cracking open the beers and not fishing, that's not covered under that, I'm assuming. Yes, no?
No.
It's not because they're not fishing or hunting or doing any of that.
All that happened there is the game wardens observed, you know, they might put up some cameras, things like that, to certain trouble areas. But during these patrols, they stand off in distance with their observation devices and see what's going on.
May I say one more thing?
Yes, sir.
I'm all for fishing. I'm all for hunting. I'm all for recreating and kayaking. I troll the shoreline in front of everybody's property and do a lot of fishing. That's not really the issue. The issue is you're, you're, you're in someone's face. That's where it comes down to. And we all know about being respectful of people's space. It's a common respect. I don't talk to you like that. You know, you gotta give people some space when you talk with them. You gotta have some courtesy, some respect.
But can you legislate that?
But when that's gone, you gotta have some sort of rule. Turn around, walk away, punch a person in the face. I don't know, I'm, you know, I'm not suggesting you do that, but I'm just saying, we're gonna face this more and more and more. And, and we had a boat last year that was cruising all around the lake. Not, not, not the houseboat rental one, which is a whole different issue. That's problematic. But another one that had all big, huge tents all over it, was a big, oh, it had to have been twenty-eight feet long, twenty-six feet long, had tents all over it. And it would creep around all the shorelines real slow to have found a place where it could get right close to the shoreline. And, and it's dark. When I go to my place, it's, you know, it's dark. And there would, like a ghost ship. Just to get close enough to land, just to hang up private property. Now, why? Well, it's only one reason why, so they can use your property as their toilet. I mean, I'm just, these things are happening now.
Rob, this is the purpose of this meeting. We need to hear these things.
And you gotta have some vision. You gotta find some ways that we can protect the huge investments that people make to be on the lake as well as those that like to enjoy it responsibly and respectfully.
But I'm not sure that ignoring the ordinance, I think, is fine the way it is. I mean, it says what they can do, what you can't do. You're talking about somebody just parking in front of your house, basically.
But when we were doing that ordinance, Don, you remember, you and I, you and I and the rest of the committee, we talked about, you know, somebody not going out in front of your camp and just dropping anchor and hanging out. And we all said, "Yeah, yeah, well, you know, that's, you know, we were going with that as, it was basically was a type of mooring." You know, because it wasn't, so, I'm just saying, it's, it needs some help.
Yeah, there, Article twelve, three, mooring control. If you notice, the attorney, let me read it. Says, "No person may moor, anchor, or otherwise affix or secure any boat or any other floating object within a mooring control area without the explicit consent of the owners of the adjacent shorefront property." Well, if you notice, the attorney crossed out "anchor" or "otherwise affix." And the reason for that is because she said, "I believe there is authority to only regulate placement of moorings. Temporary anchorage is not really within the purview of the town, nor does it infringe on any rights provided by statute." So I think you're right about it may require legislation to do something. Then she goes on to say, "It is not clear that there is authority to regulate the placement of moorings in great ponds." I'm doing some research on this.
She's right about that, by the way.
We don't even know.
We've been talking...
If you could put moorings in it.
Right. Tom, and before I start in, anybody else got anything? Shelley? Donnie? Joe, anything from you? Tom and I have been talking a lot about this mooring issue. And there are lots of parameters that we have to pay attention to. He mentioned sea planes and he mentioned, if you think of Hunter Cove as an example of how to regulate just Hunter Cove, it's very problematic because you go two-hundred feet from this shore, two-hundred feet from this shore, and you've got a sixty-foot strip in the middle.
The channel.
That... Correct. Yeah. So there's lots of issues that need to be looked at. This mooring ordinance is not ready for, it's not ready yet, in my opinion. Would you agree?
This is the mooring ordinance.
It is, this is, yes.
It's already been in.
Yeah, I understand, but I mean, in terms of us restructuring, we're not ready yet.
Well, no, we knew that.
Yeah. And there, and the help, again, that's, thank you, perfect segue. I think the help has to come from IFNW. It has to start at the state level because we're not the only ones who have to deal with this. I mean, this is a statewide issue. And we need guidance from the state so that we work all crazy for a year and get this thing done right, and the state passes something next year and we go, "Well, that was a waste of time." I think we need to get, push them. So I think between the two of us, I think we'll get something from IFNW here.
Yeah.
Hopefully before June, but...
And I would hope those conversations also include the issue of houseboats. And the idea that inland lakes and properties are, in my view, are not a place to develop a houseboat industry. You know, Seattle's one thing, okay? Ransley Lake and Musluk Lake and these other, you know, Richardson's, you know, the houseboat issue is something that's coming upon us.
It's been on Richardson now for close to twenty years. There's a dozen or more of them there.
There's two this summer on Richardson, homemade ones.
Yeah.
Well, there's four more down at, at the other end, the South Arm. There's four of them more down there.
Right.
Yeah.
So it's only gonna come this way?
Oh, yeah. I'm fortunate about it.
And...
Okay. Yes, Tom?
Just, I have spoken a bit with the shoreline zoning specialist, DEP, on this. And it is something that the state's gonna have to address for the simple reason that the licenser issues due to state. If it's a recognized licensed houseboat, that's different than something homemade that doesn't have proper license. You know, then it's basically under the state. The town doesn't really have a lot of authority. We do need to look at how waste is being taken care of from these boats, though. That's something Keith and I have worked a little bit with and also the local plumbing inspectors. And that is being looked at and worked on.
Yep. Do you have your hand up?
So, does Ransley Lake have any designated area, like, for example, on Richardson? The, the state owns one whole side, so people just go hang out there for the day. And that's all they are, is dayers. They stay at the beach all day and then they go to wherever they're staying at night. And usually, South Arm Campgrounds, if they are at one of their campgrounds, they'll kick them out. But, I mean, in all due respect, we have the same thing that happens at our camp, but we don't stop what we're doing. And then usually, they move on because they don't want to get in with what you're doing too, so, I mean...
Well, I think what Rob's pointing out, and not, I certainly don't want to put words in his mouth, but the dynamics of Ransley Lake is vastly different than any of the other big lakes. And as it resides almost wholly within the town of Ransley, you have, we have to look at this thing completely different than we do the others. So we're certainly going to be leading the charge because a good portion of Musluk, at least a quarter of Musluk is in Ransley. So there is, there's some issues there as well.
Right.
And I think whatever we can encourage the state to do to participate in this issue for us will benefit other lakes throughout the state. Yeah. We have fifteen more minutes about moorings and I'll even let you talk about noise if you want to. Whatever you'd like to talk about. How was everybody's holidays, good?
Very nice, Keith.
Sad news, we lost a friend, Brian Lewis. I don't know if you all knew Brian. Passed away Christmas Day.
Yeah. Fifty-nine, I think, wasn't it?
Worked for me for two decades off and on. I'm missing. Nothing else? Was the public hearing a quarter up? Thank you, everyone.